Good evening, and it's 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission has now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman, Commission Chairman Moes Dunkel presiding. Also present are Vice Chair Wayne Benner, and Commissioners Grant Simmons, Scott Torpey, Ivan Remar, Reed Weber, and Will Mitchell. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true Father for which His Son is one nation under God, indivisible, with whom the Lord is just as holy.
We have one quick announcement. Tonight's agenda was initially posted with a public hearing on city-initiated proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code Sections 10-2-3-D and 7-3-10-H, related to the timing of infrastructure requirements for short plats. It was discovered earlier today that this hearing was actually scheduled and noticed for our next regular meeting on May 20th. So it has been removed from the agenda. Because of an amendment, because an amendment was made and posted less than 48 hours prior to the meeting, the amended agenda cannot become effective until we vote to accept it. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept this amendment and proceed with our amended agenda with the removal of the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, amended agenda is approved. Do Commissioners have any general announcements or reports? Commissioner Benner?
Just one quick thing, if you see me squinting or not looking straight, I just had cataract surgery yesterday, so, in one eye, so. One eye may be closed a little bit to get a better focus.
Alright. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll proceed with the consent calendar. Commissioners, do you have any questions or is there anything you wish to remove from consent? One would be approval of minutes from Commission meeting on April 15th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Matters from the public, we'll proceed with matters from the public. If you would like to speak on a topic pertinent to city business that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. If you wish to speak and haven't yet signed a, or completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to staff. The forms are located on the table by the front doors.
Mr. Chair, is there something we're supposed to do with number two?
Number two is, that was also on the consent.
Oh, was it?
So, there was an example.
Got it.
Thank you. Forms by the tables, fill them out, hand them in to staff. If you're attending remotely and wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Please note that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the chambers entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not making derogatory comments about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. The Commission cannot take testimony on any specific planning or land use-related matter outside of an official public hearing. For the public hearing on tonight's agenda, please hold that testimony until after the hearing is open. Comments and testimony opportunities during the meeting are for comments only, no questions or debate. You may contact the mayor or staff during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. When it is your turn to speak, state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Molly O'Reilly.
Would you like to speak? Alright.
Hi, I'm Molly O'Reilly, and I live in the city. And I have concerns about the ordinance that you are not hearing tonight that I'd like to express now, so that there's some time to be thinking. Ontario is a really important street, there was a short plat there in 2007. If frontage improvements had not been required, then two of the lots have never been built. We would not have a continuous sidewalk on Ontario, and we might not have continuous street and curb on the north side. It's where the frogs sing, west of Luther Park, and goes to the corner, the EMS building is now part of that, and back includes Mountain West Bank. But Ontario would not have gotten sidewalk for 18 years on two of those parcels if there had not been a ti, if it hadn't been required at the time. But if you don't require it at the time, there should be a time limit. 18 years and no sign of a building, you know, may never happen, who knows? Especially where the frogs are. So, I think, I didn't see anything in the ordinance about time limits. And you don't want piecemeal road? We get complaints about sidewalks to nowhere, although small pieces of sidewalk can be very usable. You'd really like continuity, especially on busy streets. And the ordinance doesn't seem to distinguish between a place like Quest, where there's not very much traffic on that road in, and there is a pathway on one side versus Ontario, or Larch, or any, or any street close to schools, parks, residences, et cetera. The other thing is, the city has very little enforcement power. I can take you on a tour of sidewalks that were supposed to be built with buildings, additions, remodels, whatever, that we never were, because the property owner outlasted the city. And it's forgotten, and will not happen. So, this ordinance seems to take away the security deposit. Without the security deposit, what can the city do if the improvements aren't put in? Not very much. Not very much. Maybe they can go to court? Are they, yeah, how willing are they to do that? I wouldn't be. So, it's really important to look at something like this from a variety of standpoints, and add criteria for different kinds of situations. You know, I mean, you don't just want to say, oh, well, let staff decide. Well, here I am, the developer's leaning on me, Molly's leaning on me, now what do I do? There have to be criteria.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Dan Ruckert.
Planning and zoning commission, Dan Ruckert, on Ridley Village Road. And I just wanted to reinforce continuation of the code amendment, since we've been a key catalyst as far as having land to be developed in certain ways, but we want to keep some of ours for legacy and family moving forward. And I know it's all situational, it's like, but there's far and few lands to be developed with short plats, it seems like, as we get smaller and smaller in Sandpoint. But I'll just say reinforcing, and I'll be back in two weeks when we have this as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have Catherine Ruckert as well on Zoom.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, my name is Catherine Ruckert. I am not currently a resident of Sandpoint, Idaho, but my family is a part of that short plat that's happening over on Ridley Village. That is my dad in the audience there. I just wanted to address some of the previous comments, because the way I see it is that this code amendment allows for deferred improvement agreements, which means that they are deferred until the property owners choose to develop on the said property. Meaning, if I were to defer it with this code amendment for the one-acre property that my grandmother's house is currently sitting on, unless I started a development on my one-acre parcel, those sidewalks would not be mandatory. But as soon as I start any type of development on that one acre, those sidewalks would become a necessary aspect per the deferred improvement agreement. This is simply just saying, until you do things to develop your property, you do not have to have infrastructure improvements, which I believe is a perfect way to help out these short plats so that private property owners can do what they need to with their property and simply segregate out certain elements of their property. And before development happens, it can sit as is, and it is simply just held as a short plat. But as soon as development happens, that's when sidewalks happen. And I think that's a fair and equitable way to allow for improvements only when necessary. So I completely speak in favor of this. I hope on the 20th that you are able to pass this. However, I would suggest that you amend the amendment to the ordinance to make a minimum of the property lots, instead of one acre, down to .5 acres. Right now, you have it sitting at one acre minimum lot size. My particular lot size on this particular short plat is at .89 acres, which just falls short of that one acre minimum, meaning I cannot apply for this deferred improvement agreement. Thereby, it doesn't help me, and I don't think it would help many of your private property owners in Sandpoint. So I would suggest you amend that amendment to the ordinance to include minimum property sizes of .5 acres, .75. I think .5 would help more Sandpoint residents. But those are my, those are my comments for the short plat process. I hope that you approve it with that amendment on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's nobody else at this time?
Okay, that concludes the general public comment period. And we would normally move on to the public hearing, but that has been rescheduled for May 20th. And we do have no old or unfinished business either. So, moving on with new business. With public hearing removed and no old business on the agenda, we'll move on to new business and a discussion on the working draft proposing amendments to City Code Title IX, Chapter Five, regarding off-street parking and loading facilities. Well, now yield the floor to City Planner Bill Dean.
I'm going to kick us off, Commissioners, just do a couple updates for you.
And you're Jason Welker.
Jason Welker, Planning and Community Development Director. First, I want to start with an introduction. Actually, we have a new member of our planning team here tonight. If you'll look over to the opposite dais, we've got Mandy Brown. She's our new CPD admin assistant. She joined us two days ago, or yesterday. So this is literally her second day and jumping right into a P&amp;Z meeting. Haley Keys, of course, is our deputy clerk, and Katie Keeney on the right is our assistant planner. So, welcome to, Mandy, we are excited to have a full team again in the CPD department. I put on the screen for you an updated timeline for the parking management plan, of which tonight's discussion is a part of this timeline. So I just wanted to show you, there have been a slight change from three weeks ago when I shared this presentation with you. You can have a look there. The goal now is to introduce the draft parking management plan that you provided input on three weeks ago at tomorrow night's city council meeting. No public hearing, no ask for them to adopt it at this point. Just going to get some feedback from the council at tomorrow night's meeting. Tonight, we're going to workshop with you the draft ordinance that's going to be a part of that parking management plan, should council choose to proceed with it. And we would be looking at bringing that ordinance to a public hearing at the June 17th Planning and Zoning Meeting for a recommendation from this body to then bring it later in July back to council, the ordinance amendment that we're looking at tonight. You can see, we're kind of looking to hope, we're hoping to have the final parking management plan to council for adoption, for consideration for adoption on June 18th, with an implementation timeline thereafter. So looking into the summer and the fall, potentially looking out for, you know, providers of technology that could implement our parking management plan. So just, I also wanted to let you know that, and thank you for the input you provided three weeks ago. Several changes have been made to the draft plan based on the discussion we had three weeks ago. And if you are interested to see how those changes affected the plan, you can go view the current draft of it on tomorrow night's council agenda packet. So it's actually on the city website right now. So, I won't waste your time showing you those changes tonight, but if you're interested, you can tune in tomorrow night or go look at that agenda packet. So I'll hand it over to Bill Dean. He's going to be walking us through the ordinance amendments to Chapter Nine, Title Nine, Chapter Five, I believe. And I'll be kind of DJing for him here with the draft ordinance on the screen. So I will zoom in so you can read this, and it was in your packet, as you see here. So hopefully you had a chance to read through it tonight, so you came a little bit prepared to discuss.
Thank you, Jason. For the record, Bill Dean, city planner. Commissioners, it's great to be with you, thanks for set aside time. This is one of these opportunities we get to just roll up our sleeves and have a conversation. We're not asking you to take action or anything. This is really just to walk you through what I call the working draft. It's very much that, whatever we bring back to you for, you know, for your recommendation to change the code will be different than this, likely, in some small way. There's, that's just the nature of how you write code. You think you've got it just perfect, you put it under your pillow, wake up the next day, and think, you know, there's a little something I want to tweak here. And I'm sure as you read this and think about this over the next couple of weeks, you may have an idea or two or a question. So with that, what I want to do is just want to walk you through, and I even left in, I mean, I sanitized it a bit, but I even left in some of my, you know, my thinking. When I, when I update code, what I'll be doing is I'll, you know, what led to this, I should start with, is when Jason was working on the parking management plan, there was a piece related to the area where parking requirements are exempt in downtown. And that has required some changes and amendments to be consistent with what is being proposed in the management plan. So that's what led to us to just open the ordinance to begin with. And I said, hey, Jason, I'm just going to do a little nipping and tucking here in the ordinance. While we have it open, while we're looking at it, let's just see if we can't do a little cleanup. So really, what I was trying to do with what you see here tonight is just clean some things up. And so, there's 15 pages here to walk through. I just want to share with you a little bit about what I was thinking. I like to make this interactive, as we get to a section, say, hey, Bill, what are you thinking here? I don't understand this. So that's kind of how I would like to proceed. I added in red underline where I'm adding language. I have a strike through where I'm taking language out. And then when you see a highlighted section, that means I have some kind of smart aleck comment, or I've got, you know, just a note to, hey, we should talk about this, or this is, I'm still thinking of this, or there may be an issue we need to revisit. And even some of the work that I've done here with Brandon Staglin, our city engineer, specifically on parking spaces and how many we wait require or not require for certain things, still very much in flux. But with that, Chair, I think I'd just like to walk through and then to ask you if you have any questions about what you see. The way these ordinances are worded, they're pretty standard across the entire zoning ordinance. You've got general provisions. What I saw here in the first, you know, A, B, C, and D, were basically establishing that you have to follow the rules of the chapter, right? Number one, you know, basically sets up, you have to, you know, when you're developing, you've got to follow the rules here of the ordinance. What B and C did was basically clarify what happens when you're changing or enlarging a building. You know, do the provisions apply then? I think there's room here to just simplify this. Instead of having, you know, B, C, and D try to address the issue of, what do you do when there's an enlargement or a change? I think we can simplify this a little bit and just have one section. I want to read it a couple more times to make sure that works. But that was the, that was the reason I cut those things out of the ordinance. Anytime I see something that says, hey, you've got to comply with the full parking requirements, well, what does that mean? You mean somebody else has to comply with half, or a third, or 25%? So it's just not kind of, it's not the code language that I like to use, it's a little ambiguous. So, really, what you're going to see tonight mostly are cleanups along these lines. What I would recommend is just make it easier to read. Again, in the end, all zoning. It's a value expression, where do we want to go as a city? What do we want to do? Has it conformed to our comp plan? And if there's an easier way to word it, let's find that way. And that's kind of how I look at this. So that's what you see on the first section right there. What prompted me to add some language in here regarding the parking demand analysis was just sort of reflecting on recent observations on a project that came forward where a parking demand analysis was performed. And it was done after the fact, and the code is not really clear on exactly when those things should be provided. And what I've done throughout this, throughout this proposed sort of working draft is create some bookends around how that can really be better, I think, implemented. It's sort of tying it to the permit that's being sought. If someone's got a staff-level permit, well, then, then the director can make that, you know, entertain the parking demand analysis. If the planning commission is the one issuing the permit, well, the planning commission should be the one doing that. If it's the city council, it's the city council. Instead of a situation where the planning commission may be issuing a permit, and then staff later says, well, there's this code provision that says you get to provide an analysis and reduce the parking. I'd like to sort of tie those sort of analyses to the authority who's issuing the permit, so they have the fuller picture. If that makes sense, that's what I was after with that sort of language. And taking it a step further, I'm really big on due process. I think if we're going to take decisions, make decisions as a city, well, then let's make decisions that have been rigorously noticed for due process reasons. And parking's a big deal in any community, Sandpoint included. So if we're going to be reviewing a demand analysis, for example, then I'm thinking that it might be nice to put that in the notice. A project that might otherwise not generate interest, someone hears, oh, there's a piece of this that's going to be related to parking and possibly reducing what the code might otherwise require, maybe we put that in the public hearing notice itself. It's almost like, treating it almost like it's a little mini permit itself within the permit that's being sought. So that's the thinking that went behind what you see right there. And then, of course, the biggie here is on what would be D, the exemptions. Really, the biggest, and this is what, this is the big change in the ordinance that would come from, stemming from the parking management plan that Jason's been sharing with us all, is the idea of the boundaries of the exemption, expanding that a little bit. We still have some exhibits I need to put into this, into this ordinance, expanding the boundaries of that exempt area, and then clarifying that if you're non-residential, you know, you're exempt from the parking requirements. But if you're residential project within this exempt area, you'd have to pay an in-lu fee if you're not going to provide the parking. And I think we could spend quite a bit of time talking about that, but that's the plain language that you see on the page. And Jason, you have a, you have a good example of the map that would be amended, I think. I didn't get a chance to put all the new exhibits in here, but we do have an example we can share with you tonight.
So, I, yeah, I'm going to pull up a different map here in a moment. This is essentially our current parking exempt zone that includes non-residential, correct? There's a smaller residential parking exempt on code at present. So, since we're talking about pulling residential out of the exempt zone altogether, we essentially eliminated, if you're familiar with our GIS map, there's a smaller square inside of this one where all residential development was exempt. I could.
It's pulled up.
Well, okay, I'll pull up the GIS map for you guys really quick, just a moment.
Chairman, can I still?
Yeah, and while I do that, I was going to pause, you know, I was a teacher for a lot of years, so one thing I always did was stopped and checked for understanding. So, while I pull up the map, if you guys have questions about C or D, perhaps this is a good time to ask those. In fact, I'm going to stop sharing for a moment so I can share just the ordinance with you while I, on the back end, go get.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So I'll go pull up GIS maps, you guys ask any questions or comments you have on C.
Yeah, have you figured out, oh, sorry, have you figured out a formula for the in-lu fee for the residential, the exempt residential area?
We have a working formula, yes.
What is it? It is, well, it's actually lower down in the ordinance, isn't it? Do we have the numbers in the ordinance?
The number, the number's in the ordinance now, it's 10,000.
Yeah, currently, it's 10,000 per parking space. What we're looking at proposing is tying the number of parking spaces to square footage of residential. So that's a change from our current, you know, outside the parking exempt zone. We tied to the number of bedrooms, rather tying it to the square footage. And then, per parking space that you are seeking relief from, it would be a $25,000 fee. And in your previous packet, three weeks ago, there was actually an Excel sheet that showed how we came up with that calculation based on a study that was done, actually, for the city of Boise, that calculated, looked at comparable cities, 30 cities across the country, looked at how in-lu fees were determined. So $25,000 was a number that we came up with based on some research that I did, per parking space. Now, that wouldn't be, no, no, keep in mind that the proposal being one parking space required per thousand square feet of residential. So for tiny apartments that are only 400 square feet, that would only be one parking space per two and a half dwelling units. As opposed to a 1,500-square-foot luxury condo, it would be 1.5 parking spaces per unit. So there's, what we're creating is sort of this progressive parking requirement there. For the higher-end, you know, luxury, larger square foot downtown residential developments, more parking is required per unit than for efficiency apartments. And then this, you know, if you think of it sort of like a, well, I don't want to use that word, but there's a lot of systems in which incentives are created through fees like this. And this would create an incentive to actually, in essence, require less parking for smaller, more compact workforce-style housing, require more parking for larger, more higher-end, you know, tourist-oriented or second-home-oriented development downtown. And I was pulling up our maps, so let's see.
I'm not sure if it's going to be in GIS, Jason, if you just pull up the Chapter Five.
Hey, Mr. Chair, while they're pulling that up, just another question.
Commissioner.
Hey, when is a, when is a parking demand analysis obligatory? Like, when's it triggered?
It's an optional, it's an optional, that's right. And where does it come from, just really quickly, on parking demand analysis? Parking standard has been thrown about zoning ordinances for decades. There's, there's, there's some sort of similarity across cities for what a typical single-family home would require, or, you know, 1 to 250, or 1 to 3, or 1 to 250 for square feet of retail, or 1 to 500, or whatever for industrial. There's some similarity across the country, but there's a lot of evidence out there that some land uses just don't require, as many as the code would suggest, or maybe they require more. So, it's really a way for a private property owner to present the city with an analysis that says, look, you know, I've done this particular facility in other areas. It's a brewery, for example, I'm not going to have this many employees or... It's an opportunity to present some analytics so that we can make a better decision, which ultimately is going to, you know, have a huge impact on that private property and what they, and what that owner would, can do with their property. So it's a way, it's a way out of the, of the, of the strict interpretation reading of the code.
Got it.
So on the screen here is our existing parking exempt zones, the solid line being commercial, and the dotted line being residential and commercial. So if we eliminate the parking exemption for residential, then that eliminates the dotted line. But what's not in the draft ordinance tonight is the proposed expanded commercial exempt area, which is in my PowerPoint for tomorrow's presentation, so I'll just pull that up for you. So here in the highlighted yellow area is what we're proposing, actually expanding the parking exempt zone for commercial development downtown. So residential development within this zone would still be required, and they are currently required to provide parking. They would be required to provide parking, but under the new rules in our ordinance.
So let's just stop here for a second. So, we all have an understanding of the current exempt zone, correct? There's a geography there, and we have an understanding of what that, what that means, right? With the process we're unfolding right now, we're proposing to do two things. One, make that exempt area larger. That's what you see in yellow, that's number one. And number two... And number two is get rid of the dashed line. Okay, and instead of the dashed line, we're going to have some language in the, in the code that says this is how you perform if you're a non-residential project, you're exempt. But if you're residential, you've got to pay this in lieu fee, regardless of where you're located within the zone. So there's no need to have a separate geography identifying, it's just basically some language that says if you're residential, pay the in lieu fee or provide the parking. So it's a way to clarify, maps can be very confusing. So we tried to simplify, just have one image that says, if you're in this area, you're exempt. And that, there's two performance standards there, commercial, nothing. If you're, the, the, the city's not going to require you. If you're, if you're residential, the city's not going to require you, provided you pay the fee. Otherwise, you're going to, you're going to have to provide the parking. So does that, does that make sense? That's really the, the biggest policy change facing the commission and council with these ordinance, with this ordinance is that. The rest, like I mentioned, is, is mostly cleanup. And I'm going to highlight those things as we go through this evening, but does that make sense? Okay, I'm seeing lots of head shake. I'm not seeing, I've seen head shake, but I haven't seen your head shake yet, Commissioner. You're good, okay. Just want to make sure everybody's understanding what we're presenting, that's, that's really the goal tonight. And, and, you know, to weigh in on it and poke a fork at it.
Do you mind if we back up to D, sorry, to C really quick? The parking demand analysis, are there questions or thoughts or comments on what the change that is being proposed is for that section of code?
Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, so why did the dotted line exist to begin with?
I believe it was to reflect.
Yeah, what was the incentive that was trying to take place there?
I, I believe it would have been that, I'll let me pull it up again. You know, if you, if you go a little bit further north, like Alder Street in the neighborhood around, you know, what would that be like, east of Arby's, I guess, north of the hospital? There's a more traditional, like, single family home pattern of development there. So I think the intent was to treat that neighborhood more likely we treat the rest of our single family neighborhoods in which parking requirements are tied to number of bedrooms and you know, if you want to add an A to you, you have to add a parking space off street and things like that. Whereas within that dotted area, you would, you wouldn't expect single family home development within that dotted area. That would be more, yeah. You, you would expect more like apartment living, condominium living. So, you know, in, in urban environments, apartments and condominiums aren't always expected to provide parking.
So let's say in the expanded sort of, there's some homes up there, and let's say that one of the homes, you know, the land gets purchased and they put up an eight unit something, that's now exempt in terms of parking.
In which neighborhood?
Let's say it's, it's north, it's up there by Alder.
Any residential development under the, under the proposed ordinance.
So then it's tied to square footage.
Square footage, yeah, yeah.
Got it, okay, next.
Exactly. Including in the expand, in the proposed expanded zone, that would, you know, currently that's tied to what we, how we determine parking requirements for traditional single family homes. By adopting this ordinance, we would, A, exempt all commercial development within that expanded area, but also any residential development would follow the one space per thousand square foot model.
All right, what's? The non-residential, or sorry, the residential development being tied to square footage. And then with the option to pay in lieu fees, is there, have you considered the impact that may have on the urban, like, the downtown experience of a developer needs to provide 40 spaces and it's less expensive to buy the property next door, for example? And, you know, if it's an open lot, or if there's an existing building, like tear it down and put up a surface parking lot, like, I'm just curious of the, the in lieu fee in the comparison of existing land costs and what that.
What's the objective you're after? Or downtown? That, that, so parking is, parking is, in downtown is a district. It's a city problem. So we have, we have to, we have to work together to find out how we can best make the, the district work. So that's, that's how I'm going to encourage you to, to think of, of downtowns. Downtowns are different animals. We, the, the, it's the heart of the city, it's got a, it has an urban fabric and form and history and character that is irreplaceable. And what we're trying to do is, is write rules such that we protect that. And we can enhance that. So when you require parking in a downtown, you're basically removing the ability to have that street frontage have buildings on it. So not every part of your city is going to be able to perform that way in terms of the expectations the community has and what you experience with a downtown. It's different than if you're in the middle of the neighborhood, you know, two miles to the north. So I encourage you to think about how, how you want the downtown to, to look, feel and, and function. And then when you get to the residential piece, there's a, there's a point at which there's not, there's, there, we, we have to provide additional solutions than what we have today. But based on the analysis we have, we're not at that point yet. And so when you, if you're going to remove a parking requirement for downtown residential development, you really should be putting in place a fee to, because there's a value associated with that. And try to calibrate that fee as best you can to what you think the future cost of that structure might be. And then we all have to work together on when we think we might be able to pull together and get that structure, for example, structured parking on a bill. But you have to go into it with the numbers. We have a pretty good understanding of the demand downtown for downtown of this. If we're experiencing serious parking stress, we might be presenting different solutions for code amendments right now, but that's just not where we are, based on our, based on our analysis.
But if, I understood your question, though, it was, there's an over/under between, it becomes cost effective to pay the in lieu.
Versus the.
Build something smaller and maybe blacktop something that wasn't going to be blacktop.
Why not just buy, why not just buy a vacant building, make it a parking lot for 20 unit, for 20 cars? You know, like buy a house in Alder, you know?
Yeah, standalone.
And make a parking lot.
Yeah, standalone parking lots aren't going to be an allowable land use by themselves in downtown, right? So you, you know, parking is there as, as a service to another land use, right?
You can't assign 20 units to a, you know, a lot and 10 blocks away.
You, today if there was a vacant lot and somebody said I wanted, my development proposal is develop just a parking lot, is a standalone lot. You know, just standalone parking lots are not allowable land use in downtown. That doesn't mean that couldn't be changed in the future or reinterpreted somehow, but I mean, it's an interesting question. I think it, it, at some point, if someone were to decide to purchase the two lots and, and get rid of the lot line between them and and go that route, I suppose that's the market responding to the $25,000 cost, right? Not, not every developer for residential downtown is going to want to pay the in lieu fee. Some, some developers are, are, they know their product, they're going to want to insist on having parking, right? Whether that's one space or one and a half per unit, whatever, that's, that's, that's going to be a business decision. But as a city, telling people what the requirements are to develop downtown, we're, we have a district to manage. We all participate in that district in downtown. So what will land use policy can we put in place to make sure that district performs the way it's intended to perform? Right? And trying to hit that sweet spot with parking is, is very challenging.
Mr. Weber, if I understood your question correctly, you're, you're a little bit concerned about the opposite problem, which is, you know, if our in lieu fee is, is creating a disincentive to, to pay that fee, the option might be in urban form that we don't desire. So I, I think your, your, your question is a little bit more towards, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by adopting this requirement?
I mean, it's kind of what you've seen in, prior to this, the adoption of this, people were tearing down buildings and putting up surface parking lot.
Right.
All across, all over every city, you know, in the US, but. So that's my one, that's my concern with the impact that this may have.
That's just, it's, it's an incentive to, to build parking?
Yeah, to build more, to buy additional land near your property or and have that offsite parking, which I think is allowed in the code currently within 300 feet.
Offsite parking agreements are allowed within 1,000 feet, actually.
With 1,000 feet, right.
You could buy a lot, yeah, in South Sandpoint, or within that boundary still.
Purchase the rights to somebody else's lot that's already built, kind of thing.
Right, that'd be the one disconsideration is how does that, yeah, would this open up opportunity, more incentive to just create more surface parking? Or there isn't that now?
I think it definitely does compared to at present.
Right.
Right, because at present, there's no parking requirement within that smaller area, though, so we are expanding that area slightly. But the, the reality, I mean, if I can just comment briefly on, you know, we've done so much research and I'm trying to seek to understand the, the capacity of parking in Sandpoint. The supply is finite and the demand is finite as well. And right now, we have more supply than we do demand for parking downtown. But we see, you know, the potential for increasing strain on our supply in the next 10 to 15 years. The, the cost of that will be borne by other users of those public parking facilities. In other words, the public, whether it's shoppers, employees, tourists who come to town. There, there's ways to address that through pricing, which is being proposed in our parking management plan. But pricing doesn't guarantee increase in that supply if or when the time comes that our supply becomes so constrained that we are at beyond that 85% capacity that, that we talked about three weeks ago. So the, the in lieu fee or the provision of parking is a way to acknowledge the real, the, the fact that we will face supply constraints within our lifetimes. It's not, I mean, we're not talking like five years, we're going to have enough money to build a parking garage. But the, the, for the city to be able to address that supply constraint when we eventually encounter it, is going to require us to have a, a parking improvement fund with more than a $0 balance in it, which is what we have right now. So the, the parking in lieu fees or the provision of parking are a way to assure that we have a supply that lasts for generations, not just for the next 10 years.
Right. There's also other, other tools in the toolkit besides just the number of spaces or what the cost might be. Within the commercial A-zone district, there's, you know, lot frontage requirements in terms of how much of your building has to occupy the lot frontage. And there's other, there's other ways to ensure that the urban form results in something that we all recognize as the downtown type of environment. You know, or e, 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 if you wanted to provide parking for a new restaurant, for example, you wouldn't be able to put it right up on the street. We already have rules in place in commercial that just prevent that from happening, right? So it's important to remember that we're not saying you're not allowed to provide parking. We're just not, as the local agency can require it under certain circumstances. So it's, this is, this, um, this is exactly the kind of discussion we need to have, because this is, you know, these impactful decisions, right? These are, these are impactful decisions that they appreciate the comment and, and the concern. You know, Jason looked at 20 or so cities in studies about what that fee should be. We've also talked with some local developers. You know, if you had to pay $25,000, you know, what, what would that mean? That would mean no project, you know, that would, so it's, 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 it's not a little fee. It's, it's, it's a pretty substantial fee. So that's, of course, anecdotal, but, you know, we've asked a few people who are, you know, looking to develop, you know, around Sandpoint and asking, what if, if there were a $25,000 fee imposed for residential uses downtown, what, what would that mean for your project? And it's pretty clear, it'd be tough to pay. Yeah.
On the other hand, we see some residential projects being proposed that are quite overparked, like more parking than this proposed ordinance would even re, you know, require. So depending on the product that a developer's developing, they may desire to provide, you know, more parking than what our ordinance even proposes because it makes their project more marketable to their particular type of, you know, target client.
Right.
So we're, are we good on C, everybody understand what that is about? Sending any application of a parking demand analysis? The, the acceptance of that demand analysis is, is no longer going to be purely up to the planning director, rather, rather it will go to the approval body. That's, that's a pretty significant change from our current code.
Yeah, it's either going to be the planning director, the commission or the council, depending on what that cluster of permits is being sought, what the, what, what the approval authority is for that.
And just to confirm, it, it is at the time that, during the public hearing? I mean, that is part of the information that we get before we make a decision for the permit.
What we're trying to do is we're trying to, we're trying to democratize that decision in terms of by bringing it forward to a, a public hearing and daylighting that, that is being sought and used and pursued. That, that's what the point is, is to sort of daylight that. Yep, okay, yep.
Similar change here to 953A. Shared parking agreements, I have to go back to the approval body as well.
Yeah, I think, when I was reading the ordinance, I just thought that if, 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 if we have standards and there's, there's going to be carve outs to these, to these standards, whether it's a shared parking or parking reduction or exemption, I think that I, I'd like to believe that deliberate decision making includes removing the ability for just staff to be able to do this after somebody else issues the permit. I want to bring that forward at the same time as the approval authority is doing it. I think that, I think that's in everybody's interest. So everybody's informed about how the full decision is made on a project. That's kind of what I'm after here, is, is that the full decision is understood. Because there's little carve outs here, little carve outs there, that staff's left implementing, it can be uncomfortable sometimes saying, well, gosh, you know, there was a CUP on this project, but the code's pretty clear, you know, by right, you get to, you know, do this demand analysis, whatever, and, and have it taken into account. So just kind of turning that on its head and saying, we're going to, if we're going to do these carve outs, let's, let's have it tracked with the approval authority. And that's the other example of it.
So it's, it's almost becoming a CUP on its own?
Well, it, it'd be. It would be a, a request that's, it, it's almost like that. It's almost like that, it's not going to have its own separate permit, right? It'll be, it'll be part of their overall request because parking, after all, is, is a piece of a larger something, right? So you're going to be evaluating that whole something. And CUPs are interesting because it's all very highly contextually sensitive. One use here may not be the same fit as that same use down the street, right? Just given its surroundings. And parking may be one of those things where you spend a lot of time talking and discussing. So it wouldn't be its own permit, but it would certainly be part of the same dialogue. I already think there's a finding in the CUP section, if I'm not mistaken, that speaks to parking, so this would sort of track with that. Yeah. If not, we could certainly add one in. So access and maneuvering. Right now, the code has this residential uses with a density of less than 10 units per acre exempt from this requirement. Well, we don't really have a lot of units per acre calculations throughout the rest of the code. It just, it's, it's, it's not used elsewhere frequently. So we just thought we'd make it clear, and we just added in parking areas for single family duplexes and accessory dwellings are exempt from the requirement for, you have to move in a forward direction. The whole point is, if you have a parking lot and you go into it, you don't want to get to the end of it and have it be so long that it's kind of tricky to back out. But if that's a small little area, that's not so bad. So the, the question is, how do you get the sweet spot for what that, where this, where this, you know, where this carve out, where this exemption applies? I think, I think duplexes, I think we could probably go a little bit larger than a duplex.
How would a cottage development be affected by this bill?
Well, cottage developments have their parking separate anyway. It's not really, really right next to each unit, it's separate anyway. So if you had a cottage development, you would be hard pressed unless you had some 90-degree parking or angled parking, it'd be very difficult.
So just to, to think here, if you had, if, if a cottage development were proposed that had, let's say, four units in it, I guess, let's say five units in it, and three of those parking spaces backed out right into a public right of way. That wouldn't be allowed under this code.
Well, you can't, you can't really back out into public right of way anyway. Backing out in an alley is a little different. So if you backed out into an alley, this would be a problem for that development.
Yeah, that's one thing I noticed as well, is, is our alleys included in?
It, it comes down to the definition of parking area, frankly, is what, it hinges on the definition of parking area. So we're going to make a note here that we're going to take a look at this. And that's why I have it highlighted in yellow, something about this just wasn't resting with me right. Yeah, I think, I think parking area definition needs to be looked at. So. And then let's look at the next one after Jason types that comment in there. This next one is, is a little easier to, to understand. Access of driveways for parking areas and loading areas must be loaded in such a way that any vehicle entering or leaving a lot must be clearly visible. Access of driveways for parking areas and loading areas must be loaded in such a way that any vehicle entering or leaving a lot must be clearly visible for a reasonable distance. Not my idea of good code language. Based on whose discretion? What mood are they in, right? I mean, what what does that, what does that mean? So we're we're going to add something that's a little firmer here. So working with Brandon, we came up with. A standard that we think is accepted industry wide, you know, in terms of this policy on geometric design of highways and streets. It's got, it's a standard we can point to as opposed to reasonable distance. So that's the nature of why we're changing, making that change there.
Is that the same as adequate? Is that where the definition of adequate is located?
That's a another great word that if we can try to get away from something like adequate. That's a tough one, but we're we're gonna try to get away from from words like that. Minimum distance in setbacks. There's. There's some provisions here that conflict with other provisions of the code. And it gets really difficult when somebody comes to the front counter and says, oh, I want to do, you know, this with a with my garage or. Or a a development. And we've got standards elsewhere in the zoning code that sort of conflict with this. I try to understand what the intent here, I think it might be trying to prevent parking on front lawns. And if that's the case, then we should probably come up with some better language. So that's that's really what the what the what the nature that of that. Crossing that language out is, it just, it's it conflicts with other standards we have in the code and we're not really sure what the intent is. It's not very clear.
That also, it's just such a. How can a garage not obstruct the distance or the the visibility? Of motorists using a public or private street? You build a garage, it's going to obstruct the distance, but it's. It's it's problematic language, in my opinion, like, how can we refer to this to deny? You know, a proposed parking facility. You'd have to pro- deny almost any parking garage or garage on any single-family lot.
Part part of it is, you you know, I think another way to look at this is. No portion of any parking facility except the driveway approaches shall be located within five feet of the front side property lines. It it could just be related to. Wanting to have landscaping there, you know, it could it could be related to that. But it's not clear, it doesn't say what the intent here is, what we're trying to achieve and it's it it just. This gets bantered around.
I think Brandon might have something to add.
Oh, he's not allowed, are you kidding me, Brandon?
I just, I just want to say that I think I've seen that five-foot setback a lot. One of the intents sometimes is to make it so that you're not building a parking lot on somebody else's property. So if you're within five feet, you know, if you're building right on the property line, you have to dig to build a parking lot. And we're trying to avoid giving somebody permission to build a parking lot right up to their neighbor's fence line. So. Just my input.
Yeah, I think it maybe it's intended to be landscaping, maybe it has something to do with the effect of how you perform construction. If is it a do not park on your front lawn provision? It's really tough to say what that is, so. And it conflicts with other standards, so we're still looking at it.
Comment on that, just that, just it seems like that five-foot setback. Could be more relevant for like single-family type. Parking, but but versus, it says commercial and industrial, I guess, I'm thinking of apartment complexes as commercial. That are building up to the lot line potentially.
Well, what's interesting about that, if just to interrupt you, Commissioner, is is visualize a. Single-family home on a lot here north of, north of where we're sitting right now. And someone wants to have a detached garage in the back and they don't enjoy the benefit of an alley. And they want to have a driveway going on the side of their house. You know, this is problematic because you wouldn't be able to have that driveway within five feet of the side yard. And some of these lots are pretty skinny, but the whole point is trying to get that garage in the back, so you can have a better street frontage. Plus, you have garage standards that allow you to to encroach into these five-foot setbacks. So you read these things together and you're like, what am I supposed to do? So again, we were trying to figure out what was the intent? And I and I I I'm not sure this is relevant in a in a residential setting, and maybe it's for a commercial setting. So we're gonna keep. Working on it. Yeah, you see what you see what I mean there in that example?
Yeah, with the driveway.
Yeah, that's really common.
I'm just, you know, imagining a car, though, if someone was able to like pull into their property and then just park it like. And say like maybe right on their neighbors, near their neighbor's house or facing their neighbor's. It's like, well, you need at least a bit of a buffer.
Right, maybe. It it if that's the intent, for example, that that you're illustrating right now, because that that I I can visualize that right now, that'd be not necessarily. Enjoyable to be the neighbor to that person, trying to, you know, watch the football game and their headlights are constantly coming through your window. If that if that's the point, then maybe we can craft some language that speaks to. You know, the front. Portion of the lot, having to perform a certain way. That's an interesting thought. So this one, I would encourage you to think about this. And, you know, between now and the next time we we have a conversation about this, let's see if we can't come up with something that makes some sense of what we're trying to do here.
We also have to consider if you're in city improved streets with curbs, you're going to have a curb cut for the driveway. So if you've got the driveway right up to the property line, the curb cut's going to be on somebody else, it's on easement, agreed. But it impacts somebody else's curb cut. Or it'd have to be one gigantic wide curb cut to get two driveways.
Right.
Yes, it's actually interesting in this conversation, the house I lived in for seven years in South Sandpoint. It was one of these, there's many, many houses in South Sandpoint where there's shared driveways, basically. One curb curb cut, like you described, no setback. In fact, if my neighbors and my car were parked next to each other, our doors would hit each other when we opened them, which happened all the time. So I don't know if there's some intent in the code to try to prevent that here, but that's kind of a traditional thing that we have all over Sandpoint. If if the those parking facilities are required to be five feet from each other, we're now both parking our cars in our front yards, basically.
Right.
And there's a ten-foot buffer between driveways.
Yeah, five, I think there, yeah.
So in one example, it's you're you're forced to park on your lawn and the other example. Yeah, I mean, it it.
That like, when I read that, I'm like, oh, that would be terrible, actually, that it would, it would preclude the kind of traditional development that we see all over South Sandpoint. If we required ten feet between driveways, now we're in like the suburban type house with a big garage in front and driveways in the middle of the front lawn.
So suffice to say, we're gonna spend a little bit of time trying to come up with some idea. It's what we're talking about, it's like, it's it's this is why we do this, is we we have to throw this on the wall and hear other perspectives. And and the surfacing is 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 no stranger, I'm glad Brandon's here. Hard surfacing wasn't really very well defined at all in the code and. We get the questions all the time, but what what is hard surfacing, you know, like, can I crush up some? You know, old pottery and put that down, and I've got a lot of that sitting in the in the garage, you know, what what can it be? And so. We came up with this definition that Brandon can speak to.
Yeah, I guess the way I look at it is, we need to decide if we're going to continue to require hard surfacing of off-street parking. If that's the case, then we need to define it specifically, like, we had to have construction requirements on exactly what they need to build. So that they're not just designing it themselves. If we think that's too onerous, then we need to remove the hard surfacing requirement, but I don't think we can have it both ways. So that's the intent of that. That could that change right there.
Did, were we previously accepting compacted gravel as a hard surface?
Um, no, I've never accepted compacted gravel, we might have in the past or the, you know, public works or city engineer might have in the past. Um, one of the problems that I had is it did define, the the code does currently define hard surfacing, but it says. Something about pavers or. I don't know, something, some term that I've never heard of in my entire career. And it kind of leads people down this road of they they can start looking up these weird products on the internet that claim to be pervious surface. You know, the plastic grids that are filled with gravel and all that stuff. Um, I I would like to get away with that for for off-street parking, just. Because we don't want to have people. Do test cases on their property for the hard surfacing. So I think it would it would be best to just say, either to pave it with asphalt, which almost everybody's gonna pick. Or if you really want to do concrete, then you need to. Um, build it. Um, that concrete standard is essentially what we require people to build their driveway aprons to. Um, for city approaches in the in the right of way. For instance, my neighbor has pavers as their as their driveway.
So so we have a concrete entrance and then from the house to the.
So for single-family houses, I mean, that's fine, but once we get to this point where we're requiring this off-street parking facility. You know, those pavers, you might, they're 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 a maintenance nightmare. And I and I know that kind of falls on the private property owner, but.
I think I think we have to decide what is going to trigger something beyond pavers or whatever. I think I think to be really clear, yes, pavers is a good example, how how are pavers addressed in this code? If someone wants a single-family home, they will put a paver driveway and they look great, they. What what? What specifically in the code enables that to happen? We're just chatting about that. Because right there up front, you can see hard surfacing of all parking facilities shall be required. So. I think that's. A difficult statement in itself, I think we need to look at that.
And like, I'm sorry, I had a one before moving here, I had another neighbor remove their concrete driveway and replace it with a. Surface that leached water and grew grass in between it, and so it looked like a grass driveway. But it had, you know, a rigid surface underneath it.
So I think what we need to sit down as a as a city staff team and just talk about. When the asphalt or concrete is really going to be required versus gravel. Versus allowances for for other things like pavers or what you're talking about.
I just, I just want to clarify, we're, Brandon, we're talking about required off-street parking, like a parking lot, to use a common term, right? We're not talking about somebody's driveway or anything else, we're talking about where multiple cars are going to go. And it's 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 connected with some other project or development, right?
Right, yeah, so not applicable to single-family. Not applicable to duplexes either. We're talking about basically, once you're you're you trigger this off-street parking lot.
So I was, I was getting confused with Jason talking about South Sandpoint and two houses and, you know, driveways and things, I.
Well, I'm.
Not what this section's about, right?
I don't know.
This does, this code does apply to single-family, Brandon, because there are off-street parking requirements for a single-family.
Yeah, so.
This is all parking facilities where they are required, which includes all single-family.
Well, we we might, I think with the input of commission and council. I think we need to decide as a city whether it's really a requirement that we make everybody pave their. One single parking spot off of their, off of their driveway and have some sort of.
Yeah, that's what we're just talking about, is it is when we wrote this, it was trying to get away from, trying to come up with the the. Hone in on a better definition for hard surfacing, but. What we need to spend some time doing is talking about, well, when is that going to be required to begin with? And so that we have a little bit of work to do on that. Again, working draft, kind of a, you get to see our stream of consciousness as we're in the middle of it.
Oh. As far as asphalt is concerned, something you might want to put inside of here is anything that's going to get heavy vehicular traffic, i.e. waste management. Meaning anywhere there's a dumpster, you gotta use three-inch minimum. Two inches is gonna hold up more than a couple of years, it'll fail, but they're what dumpster coming down it. Yeah, I'm I'm trying to set an absolute minimum on it, you know, if they wanna, if they want to go to three-inch, which probably a lot of people will. You know, choose to do, because, you know, at that point, once you've mobilized and you have the labor involved going from two-inch to three-inch, doesn't really make that much of a difference. But I I I was kind of shooting for a for an absolute minimum. Um, but I certainly, from my engineering perspective, I wouldn't be against increasing that to three-inch.
And and if this is applying to residential, most residential. Concrete ramps going into their garage outside of the city easement, sidewalk easement and everything else have been poured traditionally four-inch.
Well, the, um, no, they, the the our, we have a city standard that's been in place for at least ten years that requires six-inch.
On on residential driveways coming out of a garage on their own private property.
Yeah, in the right of way, up to the edge of the right of way.
Oh, up to the edge of the right of way, that's what I'm saying, but from the right of way to the front of their garage.
Right.
Your profile with six inches and three and four. Is a is a ten-inch profile, yet in the concrete, you've got, or your concrete is is a ten-inch profile. And your other is, I'm trying to see it here, I can't, anyway, the smaller profile, eight-inch profile.
Yeah, yeah. So again, we might, we might discuss having two tiers. You know, one for single-family and duplexes, one for multifamily. The intent of that again is, you know. Right now, anybody who does a driveway, they're not necessarily doing off-street parking, you know, as required by the zoning code. Right, I I get applications all the time where somebody's like, I just want to build a driveway to my single-family house and I'm gonna build a parking spot out there. Because I I'm sick of parking on the street. Well, when they do that, I require them to do six inches of concrete with rebar up to the right of way and then they can do whatever they want to pass that.
That makes sense.
So that's why, that's where this this concrete section comes from, is that city standard that we've already adopted.
Cool, thank you.
You know, the intent of that is it's, it's designed for vehicle traffic.
So a little bit more work to do on that, really about in terms of the applicability piece. Well, we appreciate the feedback on this, that's that's helpful. This is all still part of the same surfacing section.
This is a.
A new, a new biggie right here, this is, this is a new and this is a biggie. So Brandon's not allowed to sit in the back row anymore. He's gonna have to come up and this is, this is another, this is another pretty significant change in the code if we were to do this. Since I've been here, a lot of feedback from all vantage points that. That we should have a conversation about the surfacing of alleys when development occurs. And what what would be required, what shouldn't be required, if we're gonna allow. Development that has access to. Whether it's an ADU or cottage development or, you know, other development through an alley. Uh, then it should be paved, or constructed to some different standard than just gravel. So what this proposal does here. Is that it establishes that requirement to to pave the entire width of the alley with hard surfacing, the entire length between. The adjacent public streets at either end of the alley, if you're gonna be developing off of it.
Is that gonna lead to a patchwork like the sidewalks where part of the alley is? Yeah, okay.
Yes, probably, in some in some cases.
Well, hold on, what with sidewalks, what what do we mean, what are we talking about, patchwork or sidewalk? Where some some lots don't have sidewalks because they, and some do, like what sidewalk lady was talking about earlier. Well, um, so paving the alley with asphalt. The intent is that if you're gonna access off the alley, we're also gonna require a driveway approach. So that driveway approach is the stuff in the right of way, and that includes a five-foot wide strip that'll be sidewalk. That makes sense? So the asphalt won't go all the way out to the asphalt on the street, through the alley, it'll stop at. The back of the sidewalk and then they'll build a thick sidewalk that's drivable and a driveway approach is drivable. And they'll be required to construct that as well as pave the alley.
Yeah, it should be.
For any side that they want to access off of. That's the standard approach detail I was just talking about earlier.
So.
But there's not gonna be a sidewalk on the alley, right? Yeah, there will be.
Commissioner Mitchell, to your question, though, the I think we wouldn't be concerned with the patchwork. Uh, you know, sidewalks to nowhere happen in alleys, because this. D here, this this section of the ordinance requires from public street to public street, the entire alley would be required to be paved if you're providing a. Access to a public parking facility accessed via an alley.
If you build an ADU on an alley, you're gonna have.
Scroll down. You didn't do your homework well.
I read this thing.
There is an exemption exemption to this requirement for attached single-family homes with or without an ADU. A duplex with or without an ADU. Okay, so ADUs and duplexes, this is, this paving requirement of alleys would only be for parking facilities for more intensive development.
Like a cottage.
With an ADU.
Right, like a cottage or 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 more.
You could actually have three dwelling units on a lot, an ADU, uh, sorry, a duplex with an ADU and not be required to pave the parking lot. But if you're doing four or more dwelling units with a parking facility access via an alley, you'll be required to pave the alley.
What cottage development requires.
Cottage development would require.
That right, because you have a minimum of four, well, I I but I I want to be clear about the patchwork.
That's a very expensive cottage development all of a sudden.
It is. Yeah, that's why, that's why, just to Brandon's point. That this is, this is a response to a lot of uh, feedback we've had on recent projects that have been approved. And we're putting it in here for this very reason is to say, is this something this this community wants? Um, it it really quickly about the patchwork. Um, I do, I do think this is resulting in patchwork because you'd have one piece way over here that's got a paved alley, one piece way over there that 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 has it. Uh, the vast majority between it wouldn't be paved, um, because most of, most of these uh. Lots aren't going to develop with, you know, cottage cottage projects.
So I I do have an example and maybe some homework because since it's just discussion purposes. Um, there's that new sixplex that's um, nearly complete over off of Lake Street kind of downtown. Um, they have um, off street covered parking. That they chose to build that's accessed off that alley. Um, go walk by there. You know, I I think it's might be clear to most people that if you have six to twelve vehicles. Accessing their parking space off that alley, if it's just gravel, it's gonna be a mess. They're gonna be tracking gravel out onto the street. They're gonna be having to maintain it all the time. They're gonna be complaining to the city that it's your right of way. Why don't you maintain it? So anyway, that's a good one to go take a look at.
Yeah, so we're trying to get the, I mean, it's a really, it's a. We'd love some feedback on whether or not. We should be requiring. Paving of alleys at a certain level of an increment of development. We we exempted here, you could see a detached home with A D U. Uh, you know duplex with or without an A D U, but um. You've seen this for the first time. We've had a little bit of a chance to think about it. So just some initial feedback would be very helpful for us.
Does the city um, maintain any of the alleys at all? So the alleys. Are not privately owned. Are they? Are they part of the deeded lots for the buildings or this is? No, the the alleys are public right of way.
They are public right.
Um, but the city instituted a policy several years ago that we're no longer going to maintain the alleys. So the way it works right now and it's not, maybe not an ideal solution, but it's just the way that it is. If you want to access. Your property off the alley, you either need to um. You know. Keep the gravel drivable or get together with your neighbors that also access off of it and pull your money together and um, you know, fix the alley. Um, I think the intent, I I can't speak for why they instituted that policy at the time, but I'm assuming the intent was that if we're gonna use taxpayer money. To pave streets, we might as well pave the the main roads first instead of paving alleys. But who knows?
I I would point out that in the uh, voter rejected local option tax last year. Um, the la- the language in that proposal did include the city taking on maintenance responsibilities for alleys. Um, but that ballot measure failed, so we do not have the funding to maintain hundreds of alleys. I think there's probably about a hundred. Uh, at least fifty two miles of alleys in Sandpoint, because they have fifty two miles of. Streets, hundred and four lane miles.
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be really opening up a. A situation where you have all these unpaved alleys and as soon as we pave one person's alley. I mean, I I I would be like, why aren't you paving my alley? So.
Well, why are we doing sidewalks? Yeah, I mean.
Same thing with the sidewalk.
But I feel like you're, if you're like a cottage or or more than four units. It it's enough use that. It does, it it's gonna raise the cost for sure, but it there's. There's gonna be enough traffic that it's gonna be a significant difference from what the typical alley is gonna see. Although, you know, some alleys are very well traveled and. I guess at some point those will be a problem too, that do fit into the exempted. But if you have four units along with the other. People that, you know, share that alley, then you've you've increased it by quite a bit, especially if that's like the primary way in and the primary place to park.
It's it's an interesting trade off too, though, um, not, of course, it adds to the cost of development, but. If you are a resident of such a development, wouldn't you also be benefiting from having a paved alley? Right? So so it actually could in theory add value to your development. You know, you're trying to sell access or rent these units that are accessed via alley. If you're a. Red a resident and every time you leave between November and March, you're leaving through six inches of mud and your car's getting completely filthy, you'd probably. Wish that that developer had paved that alley and you might be willing to pay a little bit more rent if you have access via a paved alley.
Part of it is just um. The neighborhood may be able to tolerate some intensity in terms of some of these lots converting to more intense uses and just single family homes. If. You know, a service like an alley is um, improved. It seemed to be sentiment, some recent projects we've heard is um, it'd be a little more tolerable to see some of the intensity on these uh, you know, vacant lots go. More dense than a single family home or duplex. If there was a way to, you know, treat the alleys, you know, with so with something. So it's. Some of it's just, you know, sentiment we heard through uh, recent projects, um. Just experiencing Sandpoint, driving around the alleys and taking a look at them, finding out, you know, given the 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 fact that the lot passed. Um, but it's, this is a tough one because to your point, Commissioner, it's gonna raise the costs significantly to of uh, or whoever the commissioner was of. Of of the cost of of development for um, you know, a cottage or above. But it's that, that's that balancing act in terms of, you know, fit into the neighborhood and make it a um, a more livable. Um, neighborhood or or not, it's it's. You know, part of, part of the thinking is that too, is just, you know, what's what's the reasonable um, approach here? What should we be, what should we be doing as a city in terms of our requirements?
Any other thoughts or feedback on? Paving requirements for alleys. Or the exemptions there too? Should we move on?
We've got quite a bit more, I think. Maintenance, um, we're on the maintenance.
Well, that's good. C is the addition here. Clarifying in its responsibilities.
Yeah. Here, I just crossed out a little bit of um, language um. On the lighting to to avoid accidents, I think um. I think there's a lot of reasons to have lighting. I don't know if we want to um. Suggest that if someone is code compliant, then therefore there's never gonna be an accident. You know, so I I thought it was probably prudent to take that language out. Because there's lots of ways accidents can happen, I can. Teenage daughter with my car is an example if we need to.
Oh, Brandon's favorite topic again. Brandon, wheel blocks, come on.
Oh, Brandon, you're gonna have to defend wheel blocks.
Brandon is very passionate about wheel.
Yeah, so so. Basically, what happens is when development applications come in, we have a parking aisle width standard and a parking. Stall depth standard. Those things vary between. Cities are typically around twenty to twenty three feet for a, for a typical parking stall length. What happens is. When you park your car, uh, if you're up against the sidewalk, for example, um, at the end of that parking stall where you pull into. Um, with a two or so foot overhang of your car, now that sidewalk is really rendered difficult to walk in, um, and if. Or if not impossible, um, for for some people who depending on their mobility. So Brandon, why don't you walk us through what we're, what we're trying to clarify here? Because you have this conversation just about on every project that comes in.
So the the key thing here is not just the wheel blocks, because I I think that's pretty clear to everybody, right? You put, you put those pin down curves or wheel blocks. If you're right adjacent to a sidewalk to make sure that your truck isn't hanging over the sidewalk. Um, the key thing here is clarifying that. If you put those wheel blocks in, that's where the parking space starts. That's the argument that I have with people, right? So. So they'll, they'll have a nineteen foot parking space adjacent to a sidewalk. And um, they'll say, well, in order to prevent overhang on the sidewalk, I'm gonna put a wheel block two, two feet. From the actual curb. Well, they don't get to count that two feet as their parking space anymore. Because it's very clear from the code that the depth of the parking space is from where the wheels stop, not from. You know, some arbitrary distance past that will stop, so. Um, the the previous code was not very clear in defining that and that's essentially what I'm. Trying to do with very wordy language to make it very clear, so it can't be interpreted any other way.
Question, do you anticipate the twenty three feet like standard? Curb length per stall to then need to increase to twenty five? Feet to accommodate that two. The additional two feet that we're talking about.
Well, I think it's nineteen feet right now, yeah. So it's, it's not really increasing the parking space depth. It's saying the parking space depth is the parking space depth. But where it starts is wherever the wheel stops. Doesn't matter whether it's a, whether it's a wheel block or the curb or the edge of a sidewalk. So, and then the other, the other part of this too is you can um, do a parking space directly adjacent. To a sidewalk without doing wheel blocks. It's just that you need to do a seven foot wide sidewalk to allow for two feet of overhang. So you have that option as well. You can just widen the sidewalk. We already enforce that for public sidewalks. Whenever that's the case. This is kind of clarifying it for again. As as you mentioned, Commissioner, it's um, this is about parking lots on private property. I think if we're gonna have standards about how people build this off street parking that we're requiring through the zoning code. Um, one of the things that we should do is be protecting accessible pathways throughout the interior development that aren't necessarily public sidewalks. In my opinion.
So don't do what the city did out here.
I was just gonna say that, so as you're leaving tonight, go look at the. The signs obviously don't always work, right? Just putting a sign out there that says, please don't park on the sidewalk. That's what we're trying to avoid.
The trick is to get as close to the sign as you can without hitting the sign.
Somebody was blocking the sign. They were parked so close to it.
Also, our parking lots are a great example, whatnot, because not, not only that, but this, um, whenever an obstruction greater than eight inches in height. Wheel blocks are required. We have that brick wall along the north side of our parking lot that's more than eight inches in height and it's. Very easy to back right into that because there are no wheel blocks stopping you from doing so.
Yeah, so again, that's the other argument that we get is like, there's a wall. And they have nineteen feet to the end of the parking space from the wall. And it's like, okay, well, you can't, you're gonna run into the wall, so you need to put a wheel block. Well, you don't get to count that space past the wheel block, right?
It becomes twenty one feet, that's what you need for your.
Yeah, just twenty one feet from the wall and and um, I'm, this is pretty common in most. Larger cities that I work in for for parking standards, it's pretty common to have.
Brandon, wh- where did the nineteen feet come from? Why don't we just increase our standard to twenty one feet for all parking spaces? We'll stop.
Well, we could do that, but um, parking lots that don't have adjacent sidewalks, it would be excessive, you know, we. So you 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 pick the nineteen feet because you decide that's the minimum depth for a vehicle. I don't know how they came up with that. They probably pulled it from some federal standard. But um, the point is when you decide that that's the length of the vehicle. You're not saying the vehicle's nineteen feet wide. We decided on nineteen feet because the typical vehicle that we want to design for. Is nineteen feet from the wheel stop to the. Back of the pickup bed essentially. I mean, we're talking about trucks here, right? It's really what we're talking about. Ours don't really get affected by that. And again, if you, if you don't, if you don't make sure that depth is long enough for the design vehicle. What happens is you allow people to do shorter depth of parking spaces and then. There's also standards for the access aisle, you know, the drive aisle between. And what you end up with is parking lots that are difficult to maneuver and are dangerous and. Um, you know, cause accidents.
Wheel blocks. Any questions?
Well, let's move on to the next one here. Uh, yeah, the strip being, um, I've never seen the um, somebody use the the uh, double striped lines. Um, in a parking lot, it's, it's, I think it's easy enough to figure out what the parking stall is by having one stripe down the middle of it. Less paint.
Get time to the good stuff.
Yeah.
ADA standards.
Yeah, I highlighted the language there, um. First of all, the 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 stuff that's crossed out, this must be accomplished utilizing decorative pavers or or sidewalk type walkways, just. I I think that that's, that's could be problematic. There there are standards, when you look at a project and you have to have the path to travel. Um, we're gonna let that standard dictate in. We we don't want to have things in our zoning orders that sort of conflicting with that, so that's why we we clarified here. Even if we didn't put the language in red. You know, the ADA standards are gonna be applicable anyway. They're they're federal requirements. And the idea that the planning, the planning commission can waive something like that, it is, is, is um. Problematic because the ADA is gonna apply anyway, so.
Yeah, it's just better to replace that. I I just, again, it's that sentence that we crossed out is kind of ambiguous.
Right.
What's a sidewalk type walkway? If it's not well defined, then I have to argue with every single person about what. You know, I think a sidewalk type walkway is gravel, well.
Exactly, it's, it it some of that language just needs to be cleaned up. We'll, we we might tighten this a little bit. We we may not even add the red language because I mean ADA applies no matter what. It's, 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 it's redundant. And then we're gonna certainly waive the piece about the planning commission being able to waive some things um, as relates to ADA. I think that that is not. Uh, possible.
So I I was gonna ask a question about that. Could you give us an example of? What you might consider to be a hardship where we would even consider?
No, I can't off the top of my head, um, maybe if there was. Some environmental feature on the property where there was like a a storm drainway, had to go in one particular spot and it carved up the. Um, the lot such that you had to have a waiver from that. That's the only thing I can think of. I'm not sure why it's there. We have some new exhibits we're gonna put in. Brandon's worked on some high resolution um, diagrams. I'm not changing the standards, but just simply um. Uh, making them clearer.
But here's where we uh, put the new parking requirements within the parking exempt zone. And distinguish between residential outside of the exempt area and residential within the exempt area. So here's uh. Forget which commissioner was asking what the, Will was asking what the requirement was. One for every one thousand square feet, not to exceed one point five. Parking stalls per unit.
Thirty five hundred square foot unit, one and a half.
One and a half, and that's consistent with outside. Notice that we only require. Two parking stalls at the most for detached single family homes with more than three, so a four bedroom home is required to have two. Within our commercial core, the most we would require is one point five per dwelling unit. So I'm putting a maximum on how much parking they're allowed to provide, actually. For residential.
Let's see, what's next on this?
We're getting towards the bottom here.
What was that? The exciting stuff you mentioned?
Uh, no, at the bottom, there are some more things related to the parking exemption, well.
I'm impressed you haven't fallen asleep. This is good. Okay, uh. Let's see what we have here.
In lieu fees.
And that tying up the, you know, just referencing back to the in lieu fee payments that we've already talked about.
Here's where we. Update the in lieu.
To account for the change that we talked about earlier. This is the code section that that implements that. That in lieu payment.
So where can in lieu payments be used uh, to satisfy parking requirements where new residential development within the parking exempt zone? Non-residential development and residential development outside the exempt area and non-residential development within the exempt area shall be exempt from this section. Just our take, just doubling down, making it very clear that it doesn't apply to residential, so started non-residential development in the.
And also here, instead of having the actual dollar figure put in the code itself, which if it's gonna change, requires an ordinance. Um, because this is title nine, it's an ordinance that goes through planning commission, city council. Um, I think it's probably better practice to have all of your fees set by council resolution. You know, regardless of what the fee is, instead of trying to bake them in every piece of your ordinance. So that's just sort of a best best practice um, technique.
Yeah, that, this is really important and we're, I think as a city, we're trying to get away from articulating specific fees for anything within code. Outside of the fee schedule, so we should always be referencing the annually updated fee schedule. Part of this was that this exempt fee was established. outside of the fee schedule, so we should always be referencing the annually updated fee schedule, part of this was that this exempt fee was established in two thousand nine when the parking exempt, or sorry, this in lieu payment was established in two thousand nine, I believe. Um, we've had a lot of inflation since two thousand nine. Okay, and all of our fees across the city are annually adjusted upwards by whatever the inflation was that year, but this one has not been at all, ever.
Right.
Uh, because it's not actually in our fee schedule, it's just referenced in code. So now we're referencing the fee schedule in code, and then every year, uh, the team, the staff will look at our fee schedule and make recommendations if we see construction costs increasing higher than consumer prices, for example, we might recommend that the parking in Lufi increased by more than whatever the inflation rate was that year.
So I'm gonna ask probably the dumbest question of the night. But that is, so this notion of for lack of a better term, buying your way out of a parking requirement, that's a normal thing, sort of for cities our size. And so how does the math work to set the fee? Arbitrary? Pick a number?
No, no, no.
Go back to the council, to the packet from three weeks ago and.
Yeah, yeah.
You weren't here.
Do that right now.
Um. There there's a whole, there's a whole uh, Excel sheet in that presentation, so when you have time, you might go look. And it shows actually how I came to the twenty-five thousand, which is actually a little bit low.
So it's a data-driven number.
Yeah.
It is, it's a little bit low, but but.
Not not arbitrary.
Now, I know, in in a perfect world, the city of Sandpoint could have commissioned a full in lieu uh, study, fortunately, the city of Boise did that for us. So there they did a parking, they did a parking management plan and there was a a eighteen-page appendix on in lieu fees. And as part of that appendix, they looked at thirty cities around the world and established what the, basically, the the parking in Lufi is um, across thirty different examples. And I kind of indexed that against what what we require in terms of commercial and residential in Sandpoint, and there's this whole calculation there, so if you're interested in looking at it, just. I I.
There's a reasonable, defensible, non-arbitrary.
And and what's the outcome we're trying to get to as well, um, I think what nationwide, globally, what cities are doing when establishing these parking in Lufis, which we use to inform our proposed twenty-five thousand dollars per stall, was really getting down to what is the real cost of providing off-street parking? Because what's the point of it in Lufi, I mean, we have sidewalk in Lufis, our city engineer established those based on the real cost of paving a linear foot of sidewalk. Otherwise, why are we collecting them if we're not gonna try to turn them into sidewalk? Um, we, why are we collecting parking in Lufis if we're not ultimately gonna turn them into parking? And that's why the Parking Improvement Fund, which those in Lufis go goes into, is defined in code, is only being able to be used for uh, to improve, create, or expand city parking facilities.
I have a question on that.
They say can't use for sidewalks.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Oh, oh, yeah, on that parking improvement fund or whatever you're calling it, uh, does it have any time limits on the usage, like some of the other things that you collect for? In other words, you have to spend it in five years, or you have to take a fine on the money or something like that?
That is a question for our finance director. Um, and I think it came up recently, actually, and she was gonna look into that, but I don't, we we'll have to look into that and see if there's anything in code or state law, maybe.
I believe there are some limitations depending on the nature of the fee, and then there are ways to have that time extended. For example, if you have a demonstrated capital improvement program or whatever, there's that I think we're still looking into that, um, that 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 just came up um, a week or so ago, that very question.
And do these funds ever ha- are, do they go into interest-bearing accounts so that they grow?
There's also limits on what governments can do in terms of how.
Okay.
You know, what kind of accounts they can go to, what that interest amount is that.
So you're just gonna put it underneath the mattress then?
Hopefully a little bit better than that.
I have a question, real quick, going back a half hour or more to um, shared parking? Relating it to how people might want to avoid the twenty-five thousand dollars in building, so someone might think uh, I'll try to make an arrangement, private party arrangement between myself, private citizen, and somebody else who owns property within a thousand feet over there, another private citizen. And I come.
Commissioner. Microphone. Sure, and I come, I come to an agreement, right? Uh, and I present that agreement to staff and or the commission, whoever has sort of the authority for approval. Who who keeps track of these things, I mean, th- this thing is a contract which could be broken, it could be terminated, it somebody could change the terms of it, somebody could lease out the same spot twice over the period of X number of years when somebody else forgets that, you know, I I, i- is there a i- is there an assumed administrative process on the part of somebody? Not those two private parties who's keeping track of this stuff, and if there is, should we be charging enough money to pay for that administration so that people, that that shared parking remains shared parking forever?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very interesting thought, so yes, um, the 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 agreement would have to be recorded, number one. And so when we do our development processes at City Hall, um, we're constantly looking at, see what's recorded on the property, run title reports, you know, looking to see what's what relevant documents are there, this just came up not too long ago with a project um, not having enough land to satisfy their parking needs and they had to go work with another private property adjacent to them and procure an easement, reciprocal access and parking arrangement with them. And we had to look at that easement and sign off on it, and then it was recorded. What's interesting is the idea that we might um, try to recoup some of the costs associated with the with um with that, maybe maybe, you know, the city fee sheet needs to include a a fee associated with processing that um, that agreement. But the best way we get to to maintain that is just looking through our records. For example, the other day I was looking at a project that had, it that that currently, this project is a, is a large building that wants to expand, and depending on the permit stream that it had before it, it may or may not require to come to planning commission. So similarly, we look back in the records we have and say, what was the arrangement, oh, it turns out this project already had received prior approval for such expansion that they want to do now, and that was, you know, over fifteen years ago. So the city has a pretty good record-keeping for the land development uh, records. So um, that's the best answer I can give you, that's that's how we're gonna track it is uh, we we put it in our database, it's gonna record it at the county, when development activity comes up, we look at all that stuff.
So there there's an easement recorded on the title of the property that's being leased, the 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 place where the parking stall.
Sometimes it's an easement, sometimes it's just a recorded agreement, a shared parking agreement.
Okay, which i- is non-termin- I mean, you can't terminate it, I, somebody else, I it just seems.
Those usually run with the land.
So if it's an easement, it's one thing, but.
Well, I'd be, I think attorneys would have to weigh in on, you know, to what degree that can be, you know, removed without, you know, uh, acknowledgement by the city because it's related to a permit, usually the agreements are, you know, in the recitals of the agreement, it specifies why you're doing the agreement to begin with. So.
Have a lawyer.
In short, it's a way in, in short, you can encumber the land. So that that agreement there and thereafter runs land, that can be done.
Okay, so is that what is done? When when we do this?
That, yes, is the short answer, but I'm gonna give the lawyer's answer and say it depends.
Okay.
Um, it always adds on every individual circumstance.
I I really like this line of questioning though, Scott, and I I wonder um Zach, if if a shared parking agreement is recorded but not um, uh, there's no easement on the land. And then ten years later, the uh, grantor of that shared parking agreement sells the land or comes in with a development proposal proposal for what used to be parking. What grounds does the city have to go back to the recipient of that agreement and say, hey, you're no longer compliant with your parking requirement, you have to come up to code and meet the parking requirement because your your shared parking is now gone?
Sure, so it's gonna depend on the the nature of the agreement, um, if the agreement when something's reported, the the purchaser is on notice that 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 agreement exists, whether or not they actually know that it exists. And so if it's recorded and if it encovers the land and runs with the land in perpetuity, even if they didn't know about it, even if it's fifteen years down the line, the city could dig up that agreement, say it's been reported, it it attaches to the land and you're on the hook for flying with this agreement, even though.
We need quality agreements, so it comes down to, you need to have a quality agreement that that um that that's more durable, it's not something you, it's something we need to involve our attorneys with to make sure it's worded correctly, to avoid the exact scenario that you're talking about.
Because it, I mean, it could be just a portion of the land too, right, it's a big, big church parking lot.
Right.
There's a hundred stalls and you only need ten of them.
Right.
But the does the agreement just say ten stalls and, you know, I I don't know, I mean, it's not like, it's always the whole parcel of land that is.
Well, it happens in shopping centers all the time, there'll be be, you know, you take a look at a large parking lot, you've got a strip mall and there's ten different outlets or twenty different outlets right there, and you've got this one parking lot you all share. Well, if you look at the parcel lines that that are underneath that parking lot, there could be fifteen different property owners, they all reciprocal parking and access easements. Um, if someone were to show up one day and decide they're gonna, you know, start putting stakes in the ground, you know, this is only parking for for Suzie's Sandwich Shop, put a fence down there, you're gonna run afoul of those, you know, access easements that are uh, recorded, so it's sort of self um, it pleases itself, because if the new property owner that granted the the shared parking were to remove that, the person who is enjoying it's gonna come down to City Hall and say, can you help me out, this this person's put up a fence, I'm no longer have the benefit of joining my uh, access, so again, it comes down to the quality of how these things are written. Um, and I've seen some some solid ones, I've also seen some ones that are pretty flimsy. Yeah.
Thanks, well, they can have timeframes on them too, where they can expire and and have certain people's names on them too, um. I know for uh, remote land, uh, there's been I had a report done on a piece of property that I own and there was like two hundred recorded different names over, you know, like a hundred-year period that most of them had expired because each one had like a specific amount of time or a specific use that it was only that use was the only reason they were granted access and so I'm I'm sure you know, it depends, but yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of different scenarios that can surround that, um. The the last piece I wanted to mention here is the um, the piece we're adding in a number two right here regarding if if uh, property owner intends on satisfying more than fifty percent of their parking requirement paying it in lieu fee, such application shall require review and approval by the planning commission as part of their development application, so um. Any feedback on that would be helpful, what we're trying to do is, again, it's just highlighting when we're gonna be deviating um, in a in a substantial way from from uh, an otherwise city requirement and an effort at just greater transparency and how decisions are made, this is kind of what was what led to that language there. If if you're gonna, if you're gonna buy your way down for for more than fifty percent of your parking, then maybe that's something we should at least allow uh, the neighboring property owners the benefit of hearing about as well in terms of uh, bringing it to this body in in a in a more formalized setting, that that's, it's it's really a transparency um, provision, but um something for, we're asking you to think about that and 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 let us know what you think.
I think it's uh, if it's like four units and
Yeah.
they're looking for a half, that's not 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 a big deal, I don't think, but if it's like forty units.
Hmm, yeah, good point, maybe if you scale it up if it's more than.
I was thinking of scale because it's a hundred units and forty-nine, that's huge volume.
Right.
But as a percentage.
So maybe more than more than twenty units or something? It's some some kind of a number if you're.
Does this apply even if the planning commission has no jurisdiction, no per approval authority?
Yeah, that that's that's what, that's how it's worded right now, is whoa, you're asking staff to do a lot here, um, you know, just to double-check, um. Again, trying to get the pendulum in the right spot for the expectations on the level of review for these decisions we make in development.
So.
That's what we're trying to do.
It enables a public airing of the issue and not just something that happens at the staff level, is that?
Right, and and I kind of like the the comment that will, if it's four units and someone's buying their way out of three of those, that we may need that that's need to come to commission, but if it's a you know, if this is dozens of 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 parking spaces, uh, maybe that, maybe that we cut, we have a threshold, if it's above a certain number, it's gonna come. That might make that might be uh, just more practical. We'll we'll think about that and I think that might be the end.
Got a. Comment on the parking use fund, or I guess kind of a, just a general question for everybody, but is that that's very strictly, those funds are very strictly applied to just go to parking, specific improvements for the city, is that a do we we've set this requirement for ourselves, or is there any flexibility in where these funds go?
Well, by, by the wording in the ordinance, it's uh, very limited um, to to for public parking, to improve, create, expand city parking facilities.
If you think about, I mean, the greater good of transportation and multimodal, et cetera, et cetera. How would there or could there be flexibility with a change, or is that backed by some other standard?
And I mean, that's that that's, that's a really good um thing for us to think about.
I think that's a good question as we adopt a parking management plan, perhaps with paid parking, you know, parking uh, revenues are regularly allocated towards, you know, uh, multimodal infrastructure, sidewalk improvements, bike lanes. Uh, maybe even public, some new routes for public transport, for example. Those are all appropriate uses of parking revenues that cities use, but this parking in Lou fund is already defined in code as being used for the expansion of public parking facilities, so kind of segregating those two out, you know, in the hope that if developers take advantage of this in lieu payment in the next ten, fifteen years, we can create that that nest egg that can go towards a a parking facility, parking structure.
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, it's a great question in in the sense that if we didn't have the the other components of the parking management plan, would that cause us to to want to loosen this up because we'd have a smaller pool of resources, that's interesting. If these things sort of go together, the parking management plan with this ordinance, that's an interesting comment.
I can tell you, there sure, there surely are some things that are programmed on how those funds get used, I just don't know them off the top of my head. Certainly, they can be used, if you if you're collecting par- parking in Lufi, they can be used for parking, I mean, that that's, so how much you can expand that is something that we can look into.
Yeah, maybe maybe it's limited to the mobility in the area where the fees, you know, collected from or something like that, so.
Yeah, I think I could see it potentially, exploring, expanding that to consider like, oh, we're gonna provide a bus transit stop here and that funding could go to that in that neighborhood or something, or thinking of this bigger picture for the fifteen people that don't have a parking stall, how will they you know, get around if they don't also don't own a vehicle?
Right, it certainly has to be related to parking. Uh, and I can, I mean, there'd be a little bit of a leap in logic with busing, um, of course, you could say more people taking the bus is less parking and so therefore it's related to parking, but but it would have to be related in some capacity, so.
Okay.
My estimation, commissioners, is that if we have a a paid parking policy in place, we have a parking in lieu payment on books like this, over the decade or two ahead, the the paid parking policy will generate magnitudes more revenue than any parking in the fund will. That could go towards multiple things, that's up to council, what what that, I mean, the council could say a hundred percent of it goes in the general fund and goes to police or fire, or they could say a hundred percent of it goes to sidewalks or, you know, uh, wayfinding or place-making, I mean, those are the kind of things, and in fact, in my updated presentation, might as well just show it to you again, uh, questions about I think I have some. Yeah, so questions for council, remember, I I concluded my presentation three weeks ago, thank questions for you guys, would you help me answer? Now I have some questions for council, how would you like to see parking revenues invested? Should we prioritize streetscape and pedestrian improvements, bicycle and multimodal infrastructure, public transport enhancements, place-making, public space activation, parking system maintenance and improvements, all of the above, these are just some ideas to explore. The council complete, has complete leeway as far as how they deter, decide to allocate parking revenues. But those parking in lieu funds, I I mean, my opinion is that should be protected for uh, expansion of public parking facilities, because because really we have to get there one way or another, either the private sector has to provide off-street parking or the publics, or the public sector has to provide off-street parking. This ordinance that we're proposing puts the onus on one or the other, right? Through through in Lufis, the public sector will ultimately bear the burden of providing parking for residential development downtown. If if developers opt to pay for the parking themselves, then the private sector takes care of it. But right now, there's really no option for the for the developers to contribute to the future public investment in public parking.
That's, I just think, I visualize this pot for the in lieu fee being relatively um, small.
Yeah.
You know.
What was your question?
Well, I'm not sure what place-making, or what is that?
Uh, art art signage, um, you know, historic marker, historic place-making, for example, public art is place-making.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that concludes the review, appreciate the feedback, um. Over the, over the next several months, we're probably going to have other codes that we start to amend. It's going to take a similar format where we want to have a conversation or two with you before we bring you something to act on. So you get a chance to weigh in on it and get familiar with it. So be really deliberate about what we're, what we're heading to and it there's no pride of authorship here. This is, these are, these are rules that are going to govern how this place, you know, functions. So we need the feedback. So appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's move on. Matters from city staff. Are there any general matters that the staff would like to bring to our attention at this time?
Yes, sir. There is one. There is a, a phishing scam out there with emails right now. I want to alert you to, we had a I was the target of a phishing email. What's happening is someone is monitoring development activity in the city and sending emails that look like they're official emails asking for, oh, your required application fees. Click this link and pay here. They've used another, they, they may have used one or more commissioners' names in sending correspondence to applicants, whether they're here in the county. So just be aware. If you're not sure where the email is coming from, before we click on a hover over, you know, who it was sent from, you can really see who's underlying that the name that may be presented there. Be really careful with what you're receiving because this is a second example. We know of one had, had my name in it as if I had sent an email. Another was from, you know, someone else affiliated with the city. And so it's, it's a concern. So kind of raising the alarm bells. Just want to put, you notice out there, your, your, your names are out there are because you're commissioners. And so some unsuspecting, you know, developer or property are getting an email from a commissioner saying, oh yeah, don't forget to pay your, your fees here. Click this link. So be very mindful of that and let us know if you come in, if you run into that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The commissioners have any roundtable topics for discussion? Hopefully not. Okay. Final item on the agenda. This is a hopefully not a huge one, but this is, this is, this is unique for us. Executive session. I would entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho code section seven, four dash two, zero, six, part one and F to communicate with legal counsel to discuss the legal ramifications of legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be imminent, litigated. So I need a motion.
Motion to approve an executive session.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Torby?
Yeah.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramar?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
Okay. So for those not participating in the, in the executive session, they're asked to leave and please exit the room at this time. The meeting recording and remote online attendance will now end. Thank you, everyone, everyone for attending the meeting.